I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, May the 15th, 2017. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Reverend Pam McCurdy, the Bethany United Methodist Church, 760 Hurt Road. She's going to come forward at this time and give our invocation and also lead us in the place of flag. So would everyone please rise?
And support as we begin this meeting. We thank you for this day. We thank you for the community of Smyrna and all who serve her. We thank you for the citizens of Smyrna. We thank you for the God-given capacity that exists in each of us to make this community one of peace and fairness for all. We thank you for the ability to use our minds to discern your will and work to create a strong and healthy community. God, please help all gathered here to engage in meaningful dialogue. Give us listening ears and thoughtful words. Give us opened minds and open hearts. We pray for the work of the City Council to be done with attentiveness, compassion, creativity, and integrity. I pray your blessings on all. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. And now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for those that would like to go to Bethany United Methodist for change, or if you're just new here in town, I'm sure they'd love to have you. It's at 760 Hurt Road. There was another guy named McCurdy, a guy named Jerry McCurdy. Is that any kind?
Yes, sir. He's my father-in-law.
You're kidding? Well, that's great. He's a good man. He's just like his daughter-in-law. Thank you so much. Agenda changes, I don't know that we have any. We've got a couple of proclamations and a third resolution to recognize a special group of kids, but we're going to start, we're going to stick to the agenda. Recognition of Memorial Day Poppy Weekend. Are there folks here from Ladies Auxiliary where they're always here? You're about to have y'all's money out. It's not that you don't buy them, you just donate, but it's a great opportunity and they come every single year. I'm going to ask that Corky Welch, please read that proclamation and present it to these ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Memorial Day Poppy Weekend. Whereas America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died in the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through to the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, I, A. Max Bacon of the city of Smyrna, city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim May 27th through May 29th, 2017, as Memorial Day Poppy Weekend and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this the 15th day of May in the year of the Lord, 2017. A. Max Bacon.
Anything y'all would like to say?
Of course I would. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here again this year. Actually, we do it twice a year, Memorial Weekend and Veterans Day Weekend. But we are so proud this evening to announce that Congress has made proclaimed National Poppy Day this year is Friday, the 26th of May. So it's the first time in all the years that this flower has been adopted as the memorial flower that they've recognized it. So it's really an honor for all of the Americans and our heroes that have died before, and to the American Legion and the Auxiliary for all the hard work they did to raise funds to help our veterans and our community. Thank you.
Get that $20 bill out, Corky. All I had was a 50. And we have a second proclamation in recognition of Dr. William B. Marchionne. And I don't know that Susan Wilkerson has that. I know there's, our librarian is here, and a lot of folks from the Friends of Library. I didn't see Bill, though. Okay, yeah. Y'all, y'all all come forward as Susan reads his proclamation. You're good right there.
Okay. I was just waiting for everybody to come up. All right, this is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Dr. William P. Marchionne. Whereas, Dr. William P. Marchionne is an energetic and passionate volunteer, organizer, and advocate for our community, especially for the Smyrna Public Library and the Smyrna Arts and Cultural Council. And whereas, Dr. Marchionne relocated from Boston, Massachusetts to Smyrna, Georgia in 2009 and joined the Board of the Friends of Smyrna Library in 2012, where among other contributions, he created the first Sunday Lecture Series and continues to present original local history research several times per year, initiated the Smyrna Collection of Local History Papers and Documents, and cataloged scores of these documents, and organized the Smyrna Oral History Project and transcribed the interviews. And whereas, in 2013, Dr. Marchionne researched and wrote a history of the city of Smyrna, and the book entitled "A Brief History of Smyrna, Georgia" was published by History Press the same year. And whereas, in 2014, Mayor Max Bacon requested Dr. Marchionne lead the Quality of Place Subcommittee for the Smyrna Strategic Vision Project. And as a result of this process, Dr. Marchionne served as president of the Steering Committee during the creation of the Smyrna Arts and Cultural Council. And whereas, Dr. Marchionne served as SACC's first vice president after an election of officers. He served as co-chair for an ad hoc SACC committee in the development of the Junkle City Historical Trail mobile app. And he continues to lead several historical initiatives between both the Friends of Smyrna Library and the Smyrna Arts and Cultural Council. Now therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby recognize Dr. William P. Marchionne, Marchionne's outstanding service, many contributions, and love for his adopted community, and I extend to him the gratitude of the citizens of Smyrna.
I have never known a northerner, I would say Yankee, that has given back so much to our community. And Bill, we appreciate that and all the hard work that you've done, all the research. And if you haven't read the book, this is not very long, because I've read it, it's one of my, it's not like, what's that book, the Jet 3, War and Peace? It's about this thick, yeah? But it's a brief history of Smyrna, and it is absolutely wonderful. I would just suggest that everybody today buy one. But Bill, thank you so much. If you want to say something or...
Well, I'd like to express my appreciation to you, Mayor Bacon, and to the City Council for this certificate of recognition. It's been a great pleasure to me to be working in this community on, to reveal its history to the, to an increased audience over the past several years. It seems that every community that I've lived in or even taught in over the years, I've become interested in its history. And Smyrna is a very interesting community, and I've enjoyed the experience, enjoyed the collaboration with so many of its residents in doing local history for the city of Smyrna. And I thank you again.
I'll say this, we're very fortunate that you moved to Smyrna, Georgia. And I can't tell you personally how much I appreciate the time you've spent, the information that you've shared with us, and you're one of these Yankees that we don't want to go back.
Little chance of that.
Thank you very much, though, Bill, so much. Thank you. Although it's not listed on the agenda, before I get to item C, which is the introduction of the Campbell High School Student Government President, we have one more, and we didn't have it on the agenda for tonight because they just won the championship Friday night, and that's to recognize Whitfield Boys varsity soccer team. They won the first-ever Class A state championship Friday the 12th. I'm going to let Ron Finnell, who his children go there, and his wife, he's an administrator down there, that, I'm going to let him do the honors, but I know the coach is here, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's with pride that I acknowledge to the world that Whitfield Academy is in Ward 7 in the city of Smyrna. You may have a Mabelton address, it's only the postal designation, you're a city of Smyrna. I'm going to read this resolution. I'm happy to see most of the team here and the parents and the coaches. So I'm going to read this, and we're going to have a group photo when we're done, and whoever scored the winning goal can boast and get up front here. "A resolution of the Smyrna City Council. Whereas Whitfield Academy is a distinctive Christ-centered college preparatory school in Smyrna, Georgia, which has played a key role in preparing many Smyrna students for college and life since 1997. And whereas the Whitfield Academy Wolf Pack has distinguished themselves over the years setting records and winning state titles in not only athletics but in arts and academics as well. Whereas the Wolf Pack Varsity Soccer Team has risen from having no team just four years ago to becoming the newest Whitfield Varsity Team to win a state championship." That's a remarkable thing. "Whereas the stunning rise has proven to be an example of great character, teamwork, sportsmanship, perseverance, triumph over adversity, and skilled coaching. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Smyrna City Council hereby commends and congratulates the Whitfield Wolf Pack Varsity Soccer Team." And I'm going to read the fellows' names who made this happen. Hunter Bellotti, Rashid Bellotti, Jacob Burkett, Jason Denshel, Aaron Hargus. Why don't you stand up whenever I call your names as we do it again? Hunter Bellotti, Rashid Bellotti.
Y'all can keep standing.
Yeah, stay standing there if you don't mind. Jacob Burkett, Jason Denshel, Aaron Hargus, Stephen Hellier, William Hellier, Patrick Hepner, KJ Johnson, Jared Jones, John Methune, Clayton McLemore, Matthew Elajaday. Did I get it right? Elajaday, sorry. I'll get it right one of these days, you just keep hitting me on it. Josh Orr, West Peterson, Miles Rowe, Henry Sanchez, Simon Senjensen, Walker Smith, Chip Soud, Matt Soud, Matthew Sumlin, Trey Terrell.
And they have to have a coach.
And they have coaches. Stephen Hellier, the head coach, Brian Edwards, Jake Feigl, and Jamie Highscho. Please join me in welcoming the 1A state champion men's soccer team from Whitfield Academy, 2017 champions as of Friday. Congratulations, Mayor.
I'll just make one correction, it's the boys, not the men.
They left me hanging here.
Left you hanging.
Well, I will say about this team that they have modeled character, Christ-centeredness, and a love of the game and a love of each other throughout the whole season. We were certainly not the most talented team in Class A, but their effort and their work and their love for each other was what, and the grace of God, is what propelled these guys. And it is a testimony to their effort, but also good gifts given from a great God.
Either the player you want to hoist the trophy and share it with the crew?
I'll have my two captains come do that. William Hellier and Aaron Hargus.
One back there.
There she is.
Maybe turn around. Come right here. You guys come ahead, come right up here, and turn. Rashid?
What is her name?
We have to keep backing up.
And as an added reward, you don't have to stay for any more of the meeting. That's better than hoisting the trophy. Congratulations, thank y'all very much. Thank you. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that privilege.
You're welcome. Something that we've done for the last 15 years is that we have allowed the Campbell High School Student Government President to actually preside over council meeting. And this year, we have Harold Crong, who was here. Harold, come on up. He is the student government president of Campbell High School, and he will now take over the meeting, and I'll be right behind him. I know this stuff, I know you told me to get my stuff out of the way. He will take over the meeting. I'm not sure if his parents are here or not. Never mind, they're probably watching on TV.
They are.
Okay, I'll sit back there, you sit here. There's the screen, does he know about the screen?
Yes, sir.
You're going to be amazed at how smart they are.
I got you this in case you need demo draft.
Thank you, Mayor Bacon, for the wonderful introduction. I am honored to serve as your honorary mayor tonight. The next item on the agenda is item number four, land issues, zonings, and annexations.
Good afternoon, everyone. This first item is regarding a rezoning request for Mr. Joshua W. Hall. This rezoning is from R-15 to R-15 conditional for the development of five new single-family homes at a density of 2.27 units per acre. This zoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the March 13th, 2017 meeting, and was recommended for approval by a vote of four to two with conditions. The Planning and Zoning Board originally heard the rezoning request to rezone the property from R-15 to RAD conditional. The applicant subsequently amended the rezoning application to request a zoning change from R-15 to R-15 conditional. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request for five single-family units at a density of 2.27 units per acre with conditions. Rusty Martin, our senior planner, is here to give you additional background.
As Mrs. Tammy stated, we did have a Planning and Zoning Board meeting on March 13th, 2017. At that meeting, there was a lot of public opposition to the rezoning at that time from RAD to, I mean, from R-15 to RAD. The Planning and Zoning Board took that request and recommended approval by a vote of four to two. But in between the Planning and Zoning Board meeting and this meeting tonight, we've had two public meetings since that point. The first meeting was at the beginning of April, where staff met with Forest Hills subdivision or neighborhood and basically went through the planning and zoning and development processes for the city. Then last week, February, oh, I'm sorry, May 10th, we had another meeting with Forest Hills Neighborhood where the applicant presented his plan and changes to that plan from the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. And that's where we're at tonight. And some of those changes include modifying the zoning request to R-15 conditional to eliminate the use of RAD. The subject property is zoned R-15 and is located at 1258 Hayes Drive. It's approximately 2.2 acres in size, and it has frontage on Hayes Drive and King Springs Road. There's currently one single-family home on the site with one accessory structure. The applicant is proposing five single-family homes at a density of 2.2 units per acre. Four of those single-family homes will front on Hayes Drive, and one will be accessed from King Springs. As you can see, all the properties to the north, east, and west are zoned R-15, and the property adjoining to the south is zoned RAD. There is no land use change associated with this request due to the density being 2.2 units per acre. It's under three units per acre, which is the requirement under the city's future land use map. As you can see, everything to the east of King Springs Road has a suburban residential land use classification. Here's the proposed site plan. This site plan is a little bit different than what was submitted for the Planning and Zoning Board. The original submittal had lots that were 12,000 to 13,000 square feet in size with approximately 20,000 square feet of open space where the detention facility is located. In addition, the applicant had requested a front setback reduction from 35 feet to 30. This site plan reflects residential lots that are over 15,000 square feet in size and has removed the request for the front setback reduction to 30 feet. So this is reflecting a front setback of 35 feet. In the back, you can see there's a 16,000 square foot open space. Part of that open space will be used as a detention facility. The detention facility is located right there. And with this request, there are two variances, one for lot width from 85 feet down to 55 feet, and then an interior side setback reduction from 10 feet down to 5. And what we mean by interior side setback are those side setbacks in between lots two and three, three and four, and four and five. The exterior setbacks will remain 10 feet in width, which is the same as within our 15 zoning district. Here are the zoning proposal, or the home elevations associated with the zoning proposal. This will give you a streetscape of what these homes will look like on Hayes Drive. Again, these are architectural features that you may find on some of these homes. Here's pictures of the subject property. The picture in the upper left-hand corner is the view from Hayes, and another, as you move, go clockwise, another picture from Hayes, and then finally, the view from King And these are all adjoining properties, just to give you an idea and context of what the area looks like. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from R-15 to R-15 conditional for five single-family homes at a density of 2.2 units per acre with the following conditions. Standard conditions from Section 1201, associated with building composition, protective covenants, open space requirements, storm water management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, bearing, debris, tree ordinance, and landscaping requirements. In addition to those conditions, we have also added some special conditions that are specific to the site. Number 13 deals with the minimum front, the minimum setbacks with the front being 35 feet, the exterior side being 10, interior side 5, and the rear 30. Stipulation number 14 deals with the minimum lot size being a minimum 15,000 square feet. Stipulation 15 requires a minimum driveway length 22 feet. 16 requires sidewalking and a grass buffer along Hayes and King Springs. 17 deals with trees during the development phase of the property. 18 requires that the storm water management facility be located on its own lot owned by the HOA. And 19 requires the development to be built in substantial compliance to the site plan you've seen up here. 20 binds applicant to the elevation submitted. 21 is a list of agreeable stipulations by the applicant. 22, there needs to be some differentiation between the homes. Number three deals with driveway setbacks for lots two and five. With that, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
At this time, I'd like to ask anyone else who wants to speak to come forward. If you do, please state your name, spell your last name, state your address for the official records, and what comments you have to make.
Members of the council. For the record, my name's Garv Samz, and I represent Josh Hall. In connection with this application for rezoning, and I have Mr. Hall with me tonight, and of course, he's available to respond to any questions. And as usual, Rusty's done a good job of teeing it up for you, so he's giving you the basic chronology of events and things that have happened during the pendency of the application, but we'd like to cover just a couple of other issues that may be of importance to you in terms of you ultimately making a decision. This was an application that was heard, considered, and the 4-2 vote recommended for approval by Planning and Zoning Board back in March. Since that time, what we've done is revised the site plan. We've revised the letter of agreeable stipulations and conditions. We strengthened... We've strengthened the dialogue established with the residents not only on Hayes Drive and King Springs, but also, Mr. Mayor, those residents in the Forest Hills community as well. Mr. Martin's correct, that meeting was last week. It was attended by the residents I've just described. And of course, Mr. Hall was here and made a presentation with the change in architectural style and stipulations. This is a small tract. It's a 2.2-acre tract of land located on the east side of King Springs Road, and of course, on the south side of Hayes Drive. Future land use map, suburban residential, so what we're doing is consistent with that. If you look at the densities in the area, and there's a staff analysis or general data summary in the staff analysis and recommendations that set forth the range of units per acre, density of adjacent, adjoining nearby residents. And it ranges from 2.52 units per acre up to 4.06 units per acre. We are at a density of 2.27 units per acre, which is below that range. And also is a density that is not only consistent with it, it comports with the R-15 zoning district. Since revising the proposal, there are only two differences, and Mr. Martin's covered those. But just to reiterate, only two differences between what we propose in the R-15 district, and that is the request for concurrent variance waiving the frontage for each lot from 85 feet, which your ordinance has for the R-15 zoning classification, to an average of 61 feet. And staff supports that. And it's not often that staff supports concurrent variance just because you asked for them. There's a reasoning for that. And of course, Mr. Martin set forth that the setback lots, excuse me, the setbacks with respect to the lots are interior to the subdivision, don't affect the outside. And so we are asking for concurrent variance. All the lots are above 15,000, ranging from 15,000, 16 square feet to 15,720. So in all respects, except for those two concurrent variance requests, this is an R-15, even, let's call it a conditional, R-15. We've established the dialogue with the professional staff. Your Planning and Zoning Board did a great job. We didn't anticipate the public interest that was generated by this, but it was really a good wake-up call for my client and for me and our engineer. And so what we've done since then is not just establish, but nurture the dialogue with the Forest Hills, Hayes Drive residents. And I publicly like to thank them for their articulate, eloquent manner in which they presented their opposition in March. Many times, you get unbridled vehement opposition with no substantive basis for it. And in that particular instances, or that particular instance, they gave us direction within which to go, and we've received direction, not only from your staff, but Councilman Stoner as well. And with the two, the two times we've tabled it, it's really put us in a position so we think we've addressed and resolved what they were looking for. The stipulations that Mr. Martin referenced were agreeable to the special and the standard stipulations. But also, we submitted before that town hall meeting a stipulation letter dated May the 3, 2017, and submitted contemporaneously with that letter a revised site plan, which Mr. Martin has shown you and which is consistent with the proposal. The houses will range from a minimum of 3,000 square feet up to 4,500 square feet and beyond, price points beginning at $600,000 and upwards, depending upon the type of interior modifications, renovations, not renovations, but modifications and upgrades inherent to each individual purchaser. The architectural style and composition, to me, is stunning. Of course, what you've seen are architectural renderings. That gives us an opportunity, if we're in substantial compliance with that, to review on individual basis the houses as they come in for development by staff to ensure that they comport with what you've seen and what the Forest Hills, Hayes Drive residents have seen. In terms of parking, two-car garages, limited, not limited, but ensuring that there's at least room for two vehicles to park there at all times. Driveways, the length that the city requires at 22 feet with additional two spaces there. So there'll be ample parking without having to park any vehicles on Hayes or King Springs. There are a lot of stipulations and conditions, some of which are boilerplate, some of which go beyond that. And one of those is to preserve specimen trees. I don't know if you've seen the property, but there's some specimen trees on the property. So every effort, now this is going to sound nebulous, but it's not. Every effort's going to be undertaken to save the specimen trees, which have not already been designated by either our arborist or the city's arborist, is dead, dying, or irrevocably diseased. Many times, you'll see trees that are specimen trees, but they are, in fact, in the process of dying. So that being the case, we'll follow your arborist's recommendations with respect to those trees. But because, quite candidly, and Mr. Hall would speak to this as well, as well as his broker who's with me tonight, that adds value to the property, to everyone, and value to the neighborhood and to Forest Hills as well. We do have access to water and sewer that's covered extensively, explicitly, and with specificity in the stipulation letter. There'll be sidewalks that we'll have on King Springs and Hayes as well. We've put it into position so that the ward council member, whether it's Mr. Stoner or later, in case he decides he doesn't want to be in this position anymore, whoever the council member is, will have the authority, along with staff, to make minor modifications to the site plan, the stipulations, the conditions, as it goes through plan review and thereafter. And when I say minor, I do mean minor changes. I'm going to thank the residents of Hayes Drive. Again, the Forest Hills folks and the community for their interest and participation in this process. As a result of their involvement, what they were able to do with us and staff and Councilman Stoner's cooperation is really achieve an excellent template for these type of developments within a development in order to gain continuity and consistency within subdivisions that are primed or prone for a bit of redevelopment. So for all these reasons, and because of significant changes that Mr. Hall has made in concert with input from your constituents, Councilman Stoner's constituents, we do ask that you approve the zoning as presented to you tonight, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Stoner. Mr. Hall and I are available to respond to any questions you may have at the appropriate time, sir.
Does anybody else have any comments at this time? Oh, please come forward. Yes, this is a public hearing, so anyone wanting to speak in opposition to or wants to make public comment for this item will need to come forward now and be sworn in, and then we will call on you to speak at the appropriate time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shante Glover. I live at 1201 Kingsview Drive in Smyrna. Actually, I'm not in opposition. I think it's a good idea to continue building in the area. I just had a question. So my home is directly behind the proposed lot with the four houses. And I just wondered if you had a better picture that could show me how far back the property line will go, because there's a conservation area. And then right behind the conservation area is my lot. So I just wanted to know how far back you would go into that area before you actually bump up against the conservation area.
Could you tell me your address again? I'm sorry.
1201 Kingsview Drive, Shante Glover.
Yeah, you see where the detention facility is and the open spaces?
Yep.
If you go just to the south, that's where the conservation and the detention facility for Woodbury Place is located.
Okay.
So I can't...
So this will be open space with trees behind the facility before it even gets to the conservation lot? Okay, okay.
So I can't give you a distance on that. It may be, just looking at it, it may be 100 feet to 150 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, and Rusty, on that, real quickly, obviously, to your point, you still have that buffer in the sense of that conservation area backing up to the retention pond area.
Great, thank you. Just a question. Have a good evening.
I believe there's a question from the council member?
Yes, my question is about the storm water management facility. And when I compare it to the site plan that was approved with the, or at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, and how that's changed in terms of, like, you know, where it's located or the maintenance of it and that kind of thing. And who would answer that for me?
The storm water maintenance facility, storm water management, water quality facility is positioned where our engineer, Jeff Smith of Ridgeline, in concert with Eric Randall, your city engineer, had determined it's best. There is, the site plan's not showing right now, but on the right or eastern side of the property, there's an access easement that allows folks to be able to get down to it for maintenance purposes.
So when you say get down to it, will there be, like, soil removed to create a bigger, like, retention pond area in that area? Because it looks like there's, like, topographically, it kind of goes downhill anyway, so...
It is. The natural contours flow towards that position, as Wilkinson. And there will be cut and fill. It will be created to be an earthen structure, but it'll be created in accordance with your storm water requirements.
Okay, and is it the same as it was before? Or did that change with this new...
It is conceptual right now. Until you really go through full engineering on the site, it's hard to pinpoint exactly where that would be. But conceptually, it's where our engineers and your engineer had said is appropriate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, just to reiterate what Mr. Sam said. This is a conceptual plan. Once we get full hydrologies and understand the volume of water that needs to be detained, that'll determine the size of that detention pond. At this point, we're just more interested in making sure that there is adequate area left over to be able to accommodate that volume. And the city engineer believes we've got enough land to be able to do that.
Okay. And then the maintenance of that stormwater facility would be, like, who would be in charge of that maintenance?
The HOA will be in charge of that maintenance. The city, prior to the issuance of the first CO, will require the developer to create an inspection-maintenance agreement that'll be recorded at Cobb County and will be associated with this plot. And that inspection-maintenance agreement will outline all the maintenance over the life of that detention facility. In addition, as we move through the lifecycle of that detention pond, staff will be inspecting that pond to make sure those maintenance requirements are being adhered to.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional comments at this time? Mr. Stoner, may I have a motion?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Just very quickly, before I do that, I do want to thank Josh Hall, working with the community. As was mentioned, there was a robust turnout at the Planning and Zoning hearing back in March. And I appreciate the fact that he was willing to sit down and meet with the neighborhood, the Forest Hills Preservation Group, and other citizens of Forest Hills, and work through some of the questions they have, some of the concerns. And I think we came to a great, in a sense, really compromise that worked for everyone in the neighborhood and also for the redevelopment of this property in a way that integrates it properly into the Forest Hills neighborhood. So again, I just want to thank you for listening and being willing to engage and participate. It was a good lesson, hopefully, other people can follow also as they develop here in Smyrna. We hope you continue to look at building in our community. I think you made an impression on a lot of folks in the neighborhood of the quality product that you're bringing to Forest Hills. At this time, I'm going to make a motion for 4A, 2017-105, zoning request, Z17-005, rezoning from R-15 to R-15 conditional for the development of the five, single-family residence, 2.2 acres, landlot 527 at 1258 Hayes Drive. Joshua W. Hall, applicant.
I have a question, real quick, and this is for Scott. With the variance for the setback from, you know, what the R-15 is 80, and this is a variance allowing 55-foot front setbacks, or the setback of the lot, does this set a precedence for the future for R-15 developments in terms of allowing that narrow, or the width of the lot, I mean, from 80 to 55?
I don't think it would set a precedent that we had to necessarily follow. We've gone through the analysis here to show how it's required for this one development. So we'd do the same analysis with the other developments that came forward.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. And at this time, I would like to quickly defer to Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take this moment. We have a very important person in the building, and I wanted to move an item up on the agenda to take advantage of his scheduling. So I move, with the council's indulgence, to move an item up on the agenda for taking item 6B next on the agenda. And it is my privilege to read 2017-184, "Approve the appointment of Tammy Sadler Jones, formerly as the City Administrator. She's been in an acting capacity. Approval to enter into an employment contract between Ms. Sadler Jones and the City of Smyrna, and to have the mayor sign and execute all related documents." And I'd like to have her spouse and the VIP join us up front, if I could, please. Leland has an important date with Mr. Sandman here. We have a motion on the floor.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero.
Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Bacon. Thank you, each and every council member. Thank you, citizens of Smyrna. I also want to thank the staff. And last, but not least, I have to thank my supportive husband, Lamar Jones, and our two-year-old son, Leland Jones, who has an eight o'clock bedtime. So thank you very much for allowing us to move this item up. And to the citizens, you have my commitment to do my very, very best as your city administrator. So thank you very much.
Okay, so now we'll return to the agenda. Item B is a zoning request for the rezoning from R-15 to R-15 conditional for the development of two, single-family residences on .384 acres, landlot 664, located at 2611 Argo Drive, by the applicant, Anthony Lim. Is the applicant here? Okay. Will you please read the background, Ms. Sadler Jones?
Yes, thank you. Anthony Lim is requesting a rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional for the construction of two new, single-family residences at a density of 5.2 units per acre on an existing vacant lot located at 2611 Argo Drive. The zoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the April 10, 2017 meeting and was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the requested rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional for the construction of two new, single-family residences at a density of 5.2 units per acre with conditions. And again, Rusty Martin, pardon me, our senior planner, is here to give additional background information.
Ms. Jones did a great job of summarizing the request up to this point, so I'm going to go through this pretty quick. This is a three-tenths-of-an-acre site. This is three tenths of an acre site. It's located on Argo Road, just off of Bates Street. The existing zoning for the property is R15. The applicant is requesting to rezone the site to RAD conditional and build two single-family homes. As you can see, the surrounding property is zoned R15. There is a little bit of R12 and RAD in the approximate area, but all the other contiguous property is R15. This request is being accompanied by a land use change from suburban residential to medium-density residential. Suburban residential is under three units per acre. Medium-density residential allows up to six units per acre. And as you can see, to the northwest and south, the land use classification is suburban residential. The properties to the east, in the orange, are medium-density residential. So this would be a continuation of that medium-density residential land use classification. Here's the proposed site plan. The homes will front on Bates Street with Argo Drive, with a little tag-in on Bates Street. Each home will have its own driveway, and the homes will have the following setbacks: a front setback of 35 feet, side setbacks of 10, and a rear setback of 30. There'll be a five-foot sidewalk carved along the front edge. And then these will be the individual stormwater management facilities for each lot. This is an example of the proposed homes for the area. This is the site. Up in the left-hand corner is the view from Argo. The lower right-hand corner is the view from Bates. And then these are the adjoining properties, to give you some context. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the property from R15 RAD for two single-family homes with the following conditions from Section 1201 of the zoning ordinance related to composition of the homes, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, bearing of debris, tree ordinance requirements, and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, we are applying special conditions. Number 10 deals with the minimum front setbacks, which I read earlier. Eleven deals with the minimum driveway length of 22 feet. Twelve requires a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. And thirteen requires a minimum lot width of 50 feet. Fourteen deals with the minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet for the homes. Fifteen is the requirement for the five-foot sidewalk along Argo Drive. Sixteen deals with trees during the development phase. Seventeen ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan submitted. And eighteen ties the zoning to the elevation submitted. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wanting to speak in opposition to or wants to make public comment for this item will need to come forward now and be sworn in, and then we will call on you to speak at the appropriate time.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Thomas Starr, and I'm an adjacent property owner, I live right in the back of... And I was noticing the sign that where the zoning come up, it was facing Argo and Bates Street. I'm not in opposition of him building or any construction. My problem with him, I think their survey is wrong. Their survey has jumped over my land. And I noticed that they had, they put, the last survey they'd done, they had put stakes in my yard. And I tried to call the survey, the surveyor that was doing it, but I never got an answer. And I was surprised that if they were going to do construction, the area looked like they would have came to me and tried to, you know, talk about this thing. And I can appreciate the building something in that area because we need it bad. And I don't have no opposition to that. I just want the survey squared away. That's my only objection I have.
Mr. Martin, do you have any insight to give?
The only information I have is the survey that was submitted reflects what's recorded on the county tax plots. The signs are posted on the rightaways that the property fronts, so I wanted to make sure we had a sign on Argo as well as Bates. I'm sure that you may want to ask the applicant how he wants to handle this, but I'm sure they'd probably be interested in trying to figure out if there is a discrepancy at this point.
Right. I would think that that's definitely the case, and I think that it does need to be determined if there is a discrepancy. Now, when surveys are done, I know there are sometimes questions about the stakes. Are the stakes put in precisely on the property line?
I mean, best of their knowledge is what's recorded with the county. I mean, they're exact coordinates, so...
Right, right.
They're pretty precise, but, you know, I don't know if there was a transaction for the property that abuts on Bates. I don't have those records in front of me.
Is the developer here?
The property owner.
Yes, yes.
Again, just my question is, and in answer to some of it, and I'm not a surveyor, but I'm an engineer and have been around the survey business for years and years, sometimes there's what we term as offset stakes.
That's exactly what I was referring to.
Could be that the stake, now, if the stake has property corner written on it, that's a different story. But sometimes a surveyor will set an offset stake to, just to go back, so that the exact corner is not, even though it may be destroyed during construction or whatever, he's got a way of going back. But I would recommend that you still, that we get it worked out with the surveyor before any construction begin out there.
Yeah, and the offset stakes are the, I didn't have the vocabulary for them, but that's what I'm referring to, because that actually came up for a rezoning that we did over near the Five Points area, near Williams Park and Rose Garden. And there were some questions from a church that was located there, because they saw the stakes, and they were the offset stakes. But I do think that this is definitely something that we will get the answer to this question before any kind of construction begins.
I've lived there practically all my life. Matter of fact, I was one of the first person that went to the school there. I know this land quite well.
Right.
And the property that he's developing, I've never known it to be big enough to put a house on. The house that was on it, it was so small, and now he's talking about putting two houses on it. I don't see it, unless it's something that I don't know. And that property has never had an outlet to Bates Street. Matter of fact, my uncle is the one who cut this street in there, and I know it. I know it well. And the only frontage they would have would be Argo Street.
Well, the properties, from what I saw on the site plan, will only be accessed by Argo Street. I mean, there, you can see on the survey where there is, and it's clear on all the maps that we have in the city, there is a little dog leg that fronts Bates. It is...
That's not right. That's one of the main points that I'm complaining about.
So you're saying there's not, that the dog leg doesn't exist?
That's not right.
Yeah, I mean, but the surveys on all the maps are pretty clear. Mr. Lim, do you have, I mean, I know that you've been, you're familiar with the property. Is there anything that you'd like to say regarding the property or the surveys?
Good evening. Okay, actually...
Could you please state your name?
My name is Anthony, Anthony Lim. I live in Georgia. Okay, actually, from the survey, it's been done twice with different company, and all both is coming with the same. If you got like an offset or something, maybe we can talk later.
Gee, wait, now, we can talk about it.
Yeah. It doesn't matter.
Okay, okay. Good.
So anything else?
Appreciate everybody.
Mr. Starr, are you comfortable moving forward with this?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to call on Mayor Pro Tem Councilmember Terry Anulowicz.
Yes, thank you. And I'm very glad that Mr. Starr came tonight, and I do agree with what he said, that this is an area that needs some redevelopment. This has been a vacant lot for a while. I think that this is going to definitely be an improvement to the vacant lot that is there right now. And so I'm happy to see this coming forward. I do want to make sure that Mr. Lim, and, you know, we'll all, I'll reach out to you, Mr. Starr, because I do want to make sure that everything is settled before any construction begins with regards to the property lines. But at this time, I am comfortable going forward and making a motion to approve this item, what is, we are item 4B, and this is the public hearing for a zoning request, Z17-007. It's a rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family residences. It's a point, I'm sorry, 0.384 acres, landlot 664, 2611 Argo Drive. The applicant is Anthony Lim.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. The next item on our list is item C, which is a zoning request for the rezoning from CBD conditional to RAD conditional for three single-family residences on .76 acres, landlot 486, located at 3071 and 3075 Nickel Street, by the applicants Rick Kolb and Kimberly Norwood. Are the applicants here? Ms. Sadler Jones, will you please read the background?
Yes, thank you. Rick Kolb and Kimberly Norwood are requesting the rezoning of 0.76 acres at 3071 and 3075 Nickel Street from CBD conditional to RAD conditional for the development of three single-family homes at a density of 3.95 units per acre. The rezoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the April 10, pardon me, 2017 meeting, and was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to zero with conditions. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from CBD conditional to RAD conditional for three detached single-family units at a density of 3.95 units per acre with conditions. And Rusty Martin will be giving the additional background on this item as well.
Just to give you a little bit of background on this zoning request, this property was originally rezoned, I believe, back in 2008 from R15 to CBD for a parking area. It was part of an assemblage. They had assembled six or seven lots. They wanted to assemble and zone the parking area with the hopes of acquiring the corner lot on Concord and Medlin Street. They were able to get that zoning through and passed. It was CBD conditional for the parking area. The economy went downhill. The development never went through, so the site remained as is since that point. In 2011, 2012, the parcels that were part of that assemblage on McLendon were rezoned from CBD to RAD conditional for four single-family homes. And then these properties were never developed or rezoned. So they've sat in their current state for the past 10 years. With that being said, I'll go through the request and give you some more background on the property. There's two single-family homes with some accessory structures. The applicant is requesting to demolish those homes and build three new single-family homes. And they're requesting the zoning change from CBD conditional to RAD conditional. And as you can see on the map, the pink is the CBD, and then the green is the RAD conditional in the area. The subject property has a future land use designation of mixed use. That will not change with this request. Single-family homes are in acceptable use under that land use designation. Here's the proposed site plan. The proposed setbacks for Lot 1 and 2 are a front setback of 25 feet, a side setback of 10 feet, and a rear setback of 25. Due to the geometry of Lot 3, they're requesting some variances with that for a front setback 15 feet, a side of 10, and a rear of 20 to be able to fit the house in there. With this request, there'll be a 10-foot rightaway dedication. Here are the locations of their stormwater management facilities. Here are the proposed home elevations. Pictures of the subject site. And then adjacent properties for some context. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from CBD conditional to RAD conditional for three single-family homes at a density of 3.95 units per acre with the following conditions: The standard conditions from Section 1201 related to composition of the homes, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, streetlights, tree ordinance, and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, we're requiring some special conditions related to number 10, which is minimum setbacks. Eleven deals with the minimum floor area requirement of 1,800 square feet. Number 12 requires a 10-foot rightaway dedication along Nichols. Thirteen ties the zoning of the property to the site plan submitted. Fourteen ties the zoning of the property to the building elevation submitted. And that's all I have.
At this time, I would like to call on Ms. Anulowicz to call on the applicant.
Yes, thank you. Is the applicant here? Thank you. Would you like to be sworn in and introduce yourself? And you are not Kimberly Norwood.
I'm Rick Kolb.
And really, one of the only questions I have, because I think this is a very nice continuation of the residential redevelopment that we have seen in this part of Smyrna, I did have a question about the detention, particularly as it regards runoff into the, there's a parking lot back there for the yoga facility that faces Concord Road. I didn't know if you had any concerns or if you had any expectation that any stormwater from the property would run off into that parking facility.
Of course, at this stage, we haven't done a detailed grading and drainage plan, but our cursory look at it, the grades drain to the northwest corner.
Okay.
Which is why the individual stormwater detention facilities are all kind of positioned on the north side of each home and a little bit towards the front or towards the west side.
Okay.
So we, I don't think there's going to be anything running that way. If it does, it'd be incidental.
All right. Thank you.
I believe Ms. Wilkinson has a question.
I did, by the way, I'm Sean Murphy, and I'm representing the applicant. I did the plans for the project.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. My question is sort of a question, maybe a legal question, but we... but we have the site plan here that is, it's got a registered signature from Sean, but I guess I'm used to seeing one from an engineer. So, I'm just wondering, a registered engineer, or if that's an issue from a, you know, from the legal standpoint?
No, it's not an issue. Sean's a registered landscape architect, so he's a registered designer in the state of Georgia.
I just didn't know if it, with some of these issues that required engineering approval. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or wants to make public comment for this item will need to come forward now and be sworn in, and then we will call on you to speak at the appropriate time. At this time, I would like to call on Mayor Pro Tem Councilmember Terry Anulowitz.
Thank you very much. And again, I do think that this is a good continuation of the residential redevelopment that we have seen in this area. Smyrna Heights, I guess this is specifically North Smyrna Heights, is an area that is experiencing growth, and I think it's only going to get better with the linear park, as that comes online. There's a lot happening in the area, so I'm excited to see this. So, this time, I am happy to move to approve item four C. This is the public hearing for zoning request Z seventeen dash zero zero six. Rezoning from CBD conditional to RAD conditional for three, single-family residences. It's a zero point seven six acre tract, land lot four eighty-six, thirty seventy-one, and thirty seventy-five Nickel Street. The applicants are Rick Cobb and Kimberly Norwood.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes six to one. The next item is item D, which is a zoning request for the rezoning from NS conditional for the development of a twelve thousand three hundred fifty square foot daycare facility and a four thousand square foot retail building on one point nine acres. Land lot six hundred twenty-one located at forty-three ninety South Cobb Drive by the applicant Blastoff Construction Incorporated. Is the applicant here? Ms. Sadler Jones, will you please read the background?
Thank you, Honorary Mayor. Blastoff Construction is requesting a rezoning for the subject property located at forty-three ninety South Cobb Drive from NS conditional to NS conditional to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations. The site would be split into two separate parcels with a daycare facility on one parcel and the retail building on the other. The first parcel will be point five five acres in size and include a four thousand square foot retail building. The second parcel will be one point three nine acres in size and include a twelve thousand three hundred and fifty square foot daycare facility. The zoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the April tenth, twenty-seventeen meeting, and was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to zero with conditions. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request for forty-three ninety South Cobb Drive from NS conditional to NS conditional. And Rusty Martin is here to provide additional background information on this item.
This is another one of the properties that we rezoned probably ten years ago in two thousand seven. And it's sitting vacant since that point. Back in two thousand seven, they rezoned the property for, from O and I to NS conditional for the development of a nineteen thousand square foot retail center. There's been no movement on the site since that point. The applicant has since gone under contract to purchase the site and build, and is proposing to build a twelve thousand square foot daycare facility along with a four thousand square foot retail building. The staff thought the proposed use change and the change in the site design was significant enough to take it back to PNZ for a hearing, and then subsequently back to you guys for an action. PNZ recommended approval of the request by an approval of seven to zero. With that being said, let's go into the site plan. This is the currently approved site plan. As you can see, it was three retail buildings with associated parking. This is the proposed building elevations for the site. Just your standard retail design. Here's the proposed site plan for the applicant. As you can see, they'll come in off of one full-access drive off of South Cobb Drive, and then have parking on either side of the retail building, and then on the south side of the property for the daycare facility. With this request, there are two variances. The first one being a reduction in minimum lot size from three acres to a half an acre, and then a reduction in the rear setback from fifty feet to fifteen. The first variance is due to the plan to put a daycare facility on this site. Right from the start, requires that no daycare facility be placed on a property with any soil contamination, which there is on the north end of the site next to the Chevron Station. Obviously, those soils will be remediated, they'll be cleaned up and replaced. However, it impacts the daycare facility. So, their proposal was to draw parcel out that section, remediate it, and put another use on it. The second request from setback reduction from fifty, fifty feet to fifteen feet, that is the same request that was approved in two thousand seven. Here's the proposed property line that divides the property. The proposed building setbacks for the site are four hundred and fifty, a side of ten, and a rear of thirty on the retail site. And then, on the daycare site, it's a front of fifty, a side of ten, and a rear of fifteen. Here's the proposed stormwater management facility. It'd be located in the play area underground. In addition, this site has some significant environmental constraints. One being a twenty-foot drainage easement that runs through the site, and the second being a twenty-foot drainage easement that bisects the site. And these are the locations of those easements. Here's the proposed building elevations for the daycare facility. Here's the subject site. And then, pictures of adjacent properties. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from NS conditional to NS conditional for the daycare facility and retail building with the following conditions carried over from zoning case Z zero six dash zero three nine. Changes to those conditions are highlighted in red, so I'm not going to read all these conditions since they've already, they're being carried over, and just go over the ones that we've changed. Stipulation nine, we updated the site plan to reflect the one that was submitted by the applicant. Number ten, we've updated the building elevations to reflect the ones submitted by the applicant. Stipulation number sixteen, we've edited that requirement to an evergreen buffer and took out the requirement for Leland Cypress. The arborist can decide on what's the appropriate evergreen screening for that sign, but it must be in accordance with section five oh three. Everything remains the same for seventeen through twenty-one. We are proposing getting rid of stipulation number twenty-two. That one is no longer needed. They are not encroaching in the stream buffer, which the original plan allowed for a small encroachment. We've added stipulation number twenty-three for, to emphasize the need for a ten-foot landscape buffer along the shared property lines with the adjoining residential properties. Number twenty-four requires an eight-foot privacy fence along the shared property lines with the adjoining residential properties. And number twenty-five is a stipulation requiring that they meet all fire safety and access requirements, and they must get approval from the city's Fire Marshal's Office prior to issuing a development permit. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wanting to speak in opposition or wants to make a public comment for this item will need to come forward now and be sworn in, and then we'll call for you to speak at the appropriate time. Please have a seat, and at this time, I would like to call on Councilmember Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was mentioned by Rusty in discussion, this has obviously been a piece of property that was zoned NS conditional, and is still being zoned NS conditional. As was mentioned, it's just the conditions have changed, and the reason for it was brought back to us for those reasons. After having some conversations concerning, you know, the conditions and some additional ones, hearing from the neighborhood in the back, which, by the way, is not in the city of Smyrna, just for everybody to understand. The residential neighborhood that's directly behind the childcare center is not in the city limits. But I did have a conversation with their HOA, and some concerns, and that's why I've requested at least an eight-foot fence for privacy reasons, because that's going to be a childcare, you know, outdoor play area. And I would like to, you know, at least for those neighbors, at least give them some privacy from the kids. Nothing against the kids. But the reason the request was made on my part, even though the citizens are not in the city limits, they're Cobb County citizens, I do not actually represent them, but I thought I was at least willing to listen to that issue, and something we might be able to do. So, that's why that condition was put in at this point. Rusty, real quickly, if you can come up and just, let's clarify some things very quickly, if possible. Just so everybody understands, the issue concerning access is decided by the state in the sense of the curb cut.
Yes.
That's not.
It is a state right-of-way, so GDOT will control where the access needs to be. They'll review and approve all plans prior to us issuing a development permit for the access point.
Right. And to that, since they're, you know, they have a right to have access to, obviously, the property has a right to have access to the state highway and everything that obviously we cannot do, in the sense that, at the end of the day, that decision is made by the state highway. It's not our right-of-way and everything.
Yes, sir.
At this point, I just want to make a few of those statements before. I know we have some folks here who wanted to make some statements. I'm sorry. Yeah. And the applicant, I know, wants an opportunity to get up and make some statements. So, let me ask the applicant if she'll come first? Because I think you also have some things you want to comment on.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman.
And please identify, yeah, please identify yourself.
I sure will. Good evening, Mr. Honorary Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Ellen Smith. I'm an attorney with Holt May. Zachoff and Wasserman, they haven't changed the name to Smith Law Firm yet, but we're working on that. My address is one hundred Galleria Parkway Suite, eighteen hundred Atlanta, three oh three three nine. I do have the pleasure of representing the applicant this evening, Blastoff Construction, and Rusty and the Councilman have done a good job of setting the stage for you. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. You have your staff's analysis. I agree with all of it, with the exception of one point, which is the point that Rusty actually made when he stood up here. This is kind of the same story as the last application that you heard. This property was rezoned by an application that was brought in two thousand six, approved in two thousand seven, and since then, it has sat vacant and empty. And so, the one piece of the staff analysis I disagree with is the position that the property has economic benefit or use as it is currently zoned, because it's sat vacant for ten years. So, I disagree with that respectfully, and request this rezoning and site plan modification. Not to bore you with the details, this is essentially a downzoning. We are seeking a density that's about fifteen percent less than what was zoned in two thousand seven. Staff line, staff has given you their analysis. I won't go through that. They have also highlighted all of the site constraints. Not only are there a number of easements that impact this property, it's a little bit oddly shaped. It also has a stream that is off-site, but the buffers are on-site, so we are dealing with those as well. Blastoff Construction, which is the applicant, has worked with Legacy Academy on a number of childcare facilities throughout the southeast. Just to give you an idea, it includes seven in the state of Georgia. This is not their first rodeo or their first daycare facility, although it will be the first one in Cobb County and in your fair city. It is an accredited institution, and it has hours of operation from six thirty AM to six thirty PM, Monday through Friday, not typically on the weekends. And we intend to start to stock the building and to build the square footage for up to initially a hundred and sixty-nine children. The applicant has requested the right to subdivide the property, and there's a variance that goes along with that to reduce the size, because this property isn't three acres to start with. We would never meet the requirement of the overlay district. So, respectfully request that variance. Rusty is right when he mentions the other variance, which is reduction of fifteen, or, excuse me, fifty feet down to fifteen feet on one of the buffers or setbacks. That was improved in the two thousand seven. I would tell you as a zoning lawyer, that a variance that's approved runs with the property. Scott can certainly take that position or disagree with me, but we respectfully request that you would renew that approval this evening. We did have approval at the Planning and Zoning Board. We did have several folks who spoke in opposition. You will hear from some of them, it looks like, this evening as well. Their primary concern was traffic. They also were concerned with landscape and buffers. And I did want to at least address that. It's already been mentioned, this is a state route. We do have a pending application with GDOT for a right-of-way driveway permit. Just to put it in perspective, the current traffic count puts South Cobb Drive at thirty-eight thousand three hundred cars per day. We are talking about adding about two hundred trips. That's less than a half of a percent increase in the number of cars on this right-of-way. So, I just want to put that in perspective. No one's saying there isn't traffic. There is. That's where we are in life, notwithstanding the fact that I-85 has now reopened mercifully. But, given that we are, in fact, seeking a reduction of density in this application, I hope you will take that into account as well. Those numbers also don't include the fact that there are shared parent drop-offs, carpool, potential for shuttle services and the like. I did want to point out too, only because it's been a question, this property does not include, and this request does not impact or include in any way, the adjacent dentist's office. Someone mentioned that at one point to me. I want to make sure you all know, that's not part of this application. There is also only one access point to this property off South Cobb Drive. There is no access off of Cooper Creek or Ivy Glen. So, that also was something that I think was misconception along the way, and I got phone calls from Cobb County and from everybody else about that. That's just not true. We agree with and appreciate staff's work on this. They have been extremely helpful throughout this whole process for the applicant since we started this process in early January, and want to say thank you to them. We agree with all of the conditions, most of which are from the two thousand seven rezoning, but we do want to clarify two of them. And if you would indulge me, I'll read them into the record, although I have provided them in writing to staff and to the council member. Number eleven, and both of these clarifications are really to reflect that we're going from a site plan that was purely retail to one that is retail and nursing, or, excuse me, daycare facility. So, it's not all retail. So, number eleven, we propose the retail truck deliveries shall comply with code section forty-six dash one. That's your city's noise ordinance. Garbage, excuse me, garbage service to the property shall occur only between seven AM and eight PM. And then, number seventeen, dealt originally with HVAC units and required them to be all on the roofs of all the buildings. We'd just like to confirm and reiterate. Um, we're happy to answer any questions you may have, appreciate your time this evening, thank you.
At this time, are there any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, real quickly, actually, and Rusty too, because we had this discussion, and concerning seventeen, uh, the change, the issue is it's a pitch roof that we have on the daycare center, and so the idea would be to put those units on the ground, as you said, screened and everything, and that's the reason, um, in our discussion, uh, that, you know, I'm open to that concept, um, since you're definitely going to screen it probably more than most folks do.
I did bring photographs as well, should you like to see the ones that we've done in the past.
Yeah, but now the retail center obviously will be on the roof.
We are supportive of that-
Right.
... request, um, it, it accomplishes the same goal that we had was, which is to screen it from the right-of-way and adjoining properties.
And as to the issue, and, and Scott, maybe you can address this, to, uh, number eleven, we're obviously going to maintain with our noise ordinance code, but the issue about garbage service to the property shall occur between seven AM and eight, eight PM, is there anything, is there anything, Rusty, if you want to comment on that issue?
No, I, I think it just helps them clarify what, what kind of traffic and what kind of, uh, deliveries are being done at what time, so it's not construed that kids being dropped off at seven o'clock or six-thirty are not violating that requirement of the stipulation.
Yeah, I mean, is that the point, you want to make sure that it doesn't cover anything as far as business operations?
That's correct.
Yeah, and it, you know, I mean, that's not the intent, is it?
That's not the intent, uh, it was just purely for, um, deliveries.
Okay. Scott, do you have any issue with that, is that?
No, I don't think, I mean, are you clear with what the requirement, yeah, it has nothing to do with, uh, business operations for the daycare, it's just the, uh, the other things, that, I think this probably arose from, uh, there were some centers down there that do deliveries, have refrigeration trucks and stuff that are, that come late at night, and I think it was directed back then at that type of operation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to ask anyone else who wants to speak to come forward, please state your name, spell your last name, and state your address for the official records and what comments you have to make.
Hi, my name is Nadia Rosen, um, my last name is Dawn R O S E N, and my address is four-three-four-nine Ivy Glen Court in Smyrna, Georgia. Um, I just have a question, could I see, you have a thumbnail of the, um, AC unit?
It's not you. It's on the right desk. It's F. It's F. Flash it up.
They'll pull it up.
It's, it's the same photos that were at the Planning and Zoning.
Okay. And so in terms of noise and things like that, does the brick create any barrier?
I'm sure it would, I'm not a, a sound expert on HVAC units, but certainly moving in from the roof, which would be closer to any residential unit than the ground, I would think it would block more than just open on the roof.
Okay, great.
But I think the intent originally was just to screen it aesthetically.
Okay, sure. The reason why I ask is because my unit is actually back, like, it's directly behind where, um, the daycare facility will be, so we're just concerned about the sound.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and just a comment, I, I expect, including the eight-foot privacy fence, and also they still have to have some landscaping, that should also help, uh, muffle any noise there versus being on the roof.
Yes. Um, is there any way, and I don't know if it's already created, is there a image that we can have of what that landscape plan would look like?
I don't know if it's fully done yet, in the sense of, uh, and that's part of the process that they'll be going through with our city staff to make sure they meet our requirements and standards.
Okay, great.
So, but that will eventually be, you know, obviously something that you can, as it gets to the point for them coming up with the final plan and designs, a public document, um, and would be available from our Community Development Department.
Okay, great, and my last thing is, and we have a couple of neighbors here that also will speak, um, for me, I would like to have a dialogue with the daycare facility, I'm not against it actually, but, you know, we really value our privacy, we value the trees that we have, um, thank you, oh, sorry, but, um, you know, we value our privacy, we value the trees that are back there, and it's really important for us, also in terms of the students that will be at the daycare facility, it's probably good to have some space in between, so I just want to reiterate that and just let you know how important that is for our community, thank you.
Thank you.
Short, so I'm going to lower it. Uh, good evening, my name is Johnny Hanks, and I reside at forty-three thirty-four Ivy Glen Court, and, uh, kind of speaking on my own behalf, but after conversations with many of our neighbors, I think we have a lot of the same concerns, and we appreciate your time in listening to us this evening. Um, again, I'm speaking of many of the concerns that we have for myself and most of the neighbors, and really they, uh, kind of group into four different categories, one being traffic safety, uh, secondly, protection of our property, overall safety, and conservation of some old-growth trees there. So in regard to, uh, traffic safety, while the notes from the previous, um, meetings on this have indicated that this project was zoned back in two thousand and seven, indeed that is true, um, however, I really don't believe that the current traffic volume or patterns have really been assessed, ten years has brought a lot of growth, people, you know, prosperity and wonderful things to Atlanta, and especially to the South Cobb Drive area, so I just want to make that point, ten years does change a lot of things. Um, I believe we have some information I can share on the number of accidents in this stretch of roadway. Penner, there we go. Um, uh, the stretch of roadway between the East-West Connector and Cooper Lake, uh, that demonstrates kind of the types and the frequency of accidents that are occurring, so in twenty sixteen, in, uh, the entrance to our neighborhood, and I will point out that is the one and only entrance to our neighborhood, there were twenty-five accidents at Ivy Glen Drive. Uh, at the East-West Connector, there were two hundred and sixty-six accidents, and at Cooper Lake, there were forty-seven accidents, so you can see, we are kind of sandwiched in between, uh, a, a lot of retail and a lot of accidents, and really a lot of energy that's going on in that particular area, and just for us, one way in and one way out. Um, also, in regard to traffic, we are concerned that there could be as many as a hundred and sixty-nine minimum drop-offs in the morning and in the evening at peak hours of traffic congestion, and we are again concerned for our safety getting in and outside of our community during peak hours as well as other times of the day. Uh, protection of our property and safety, um, we will be more visible now, and we will be having direct access to our property, uh, there's not the, the coverage and the brush of trees that really, uh, shade us and give us protection from anyone really knowing that we're there, it's been a wonderful community to have been a part of for the past twenty years, and we value, as some of my neighbors have said, just the privacy and, um, the safety that we have enjoyed for that time, and we really don't want to see that, um, destroyed to any significant degree. Uh, our neighborhood is very buffered from access from walking traffic from South Cobb because of all those tree coverage, and, uh, it makes it very difficult for that foot traffic to enter, as I've said. Um, I also want to note out, note that we also have several homeowners in the cul-de-sac that will be most affected by the development, that do work from home, um, again, I am probably one of those that's most affected as my property backs directly up to, to everything. Um, and finally, the, the tree conservation is, is extremely important to myself and our neighbors, and I'm particularly, uh, concerned as my property, as I mentioned, butts up against the project. Um, I personally don't feel that a ten-foot buffer is really adequate separation from the project, and am concerned that my property values will be negatively impacted. Um, and there is one area of my property where it really is unclear where the property lines are actually located, and I just want to ensure that no trees that are on my property, um, get taken down inadvertently in error. I know they've gone out and done some tagging with some orange strips, and, um, Lee and I had some, Ellen and I had some discussion, she was out at the property, property, and trying to figure out what those orange strips meant, but I don't think we got a definitive answer on them, they don't appear to be strictly located around what I view as the property line, some of them would go deeper into it, so I really am looking for some clarity there as well. So, um, in summary, there are just a few things that we really would like the developer to make sure that he addresses to keep us as happy neighbors and, uh, very supportive of, of projects going forward, and one that has already been mentioned is the eight-foot, and I'm hoping it would be a wooden fence and not just a chain-link fence, um, to provide as much coverage as possible, uh, conservation of as many existing trees as possible, perhaps we can incorporate some of these old-growth tall trees into the playground areas that are noted there, I think it'd be great for us, it'd be great for the kids, and, um, a win-win for all. Um, I'm also looking for identification of exactly what trees that are at the top of the property lines that are going to be taken down, again, I'm trying to avoid any of trees that are on my property being reduced in error. Thank you.
Um, at this time, Ms. Wilkinson has a question for the applicant before we continue with other speakers.
My questions, um, had to do with a couple of things, um, the, when the property was rezoned in two thousand and seven, um, it looks like to me the site plan included, uh, a shared access from the, the gas station, um, which has three entrances, two on South Cobb Drive and one on, um, I forgot what the name of that street is.
Cooper Creek.
And, but it does look like they had some shared access to this property.
I don't handle the two thousand and seven zoning, and I will be honest with you, I didn't study the two thousand and seven site plan because it's kind of being thrown out the window, um, there was, uh, I can tell you, uh, the same property owner owns two parcels that are adjacent to the gas station that do go to Cooper Creek Road, this is part of where some of the confusion, I think, about access to that-
Mm-hmm.
-street came from, uh, originally when the application was filed, it included an annexation application for those two parcels, those two parcels are in unincorporated Cobb County, that application for annexation was withdrawn, um, because we can't, it's unusable property, and frankly, it's not wide enough for an access point, uh, not at the Cooper Creek part of that property, but at the part that it touches the city of Smyrna property that is before you this evening, uh, so I, I'd be happy, I know Rusty has the two thousand and seven site plan, happy to look at it, but-
Anyway, yeah.
-there is no proposed access except on Cobb Drive.
Okay, yeah, I knew that, anyway, that I had seen that it did include some shared access, I guess, through that, um, gas station. The other thing, um, that I, I was also looking at and concerned about was the, um, safety from, well, there's two more things, but, uh, fire truck, um, turnaround to get it through the property and, um, for public safety reasons, and, um, has that been looked at?
Those are ongoing discussions with the Fire Marshal, uh, we provided turn, it, the site plan's gone through several different slight iterations since we filed, uh, originally, uh, we provided turn movements to the Fire Marshal earlier today, uh, that showed hose layout and also access to both buildings for trucks, including turnaround.
Mm-hmm, okay, and, okay, so the, oh, go ahead.
I should say, there's also an additional condition, obviously we'd be required to meet any fire standards anyway, but just for clarification, staff has added an additional condition to that end.
Okay, thanks, and then the, um, the third thing that I was, um, interested in, listening to the comments and the, um, the buffer that was provided, and I guess the way I'm looking at the property and it requires a ten-foot, um, landscape buffer-
Correct.
-around the, uh, surrounding residential properties, and if we went back to the original zoning, I think I heard it was, uh, that was more, uh-
It was a fifteen-foot setback?
Fifty or fif-
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
That, when you say the original zoning-
No, I'm talking about, not the one in two thousand and seven, but the way-
It was different zoning classification, so then it was at M O N I zoning classification, I don't know-
Oh, okay.
-if it has the same restrictions.
Well, and, well, anyway, so what I, I guess what I'm getting at is, when I look at the site plan where the buildings are going to go, and I know some of it is, um, like, um, uh, I guess play area and everything-
Correct.
-but is there, uh, an option to keep some trees in that area on both sides to, to kind of accommodate some of those concerns that I was hearing from the residents?
I, I suspect, in all honesty, the answer is no, primarily because of grading issues, um, to ensure this, this property has significant topography on it, um, I suspect that the likelihood of maintaining significant trees, look, you're dealing with an unimproved parcel currently, that is a buffer between South Cobb Drive and Ivy Glen, it's a, it's a buffer because it's just undeveloped at this point, the two thousand and seven zoning allowed for the development of the property, including a fifty-foot buffer in some instances, but including the ten, or fifteen-foot setback, uh, in others, and did not require a landscape buffer, um, we have added, maintained the fifteen feet along the one property line adjacent to Ivy Glen, and added the requirements for the landscape buffer. Certainly, nobody wants to cut down trees, they don't have to, but at the same time, I think, I'm not going to stand here and say every tree on the property will remain-
I understand, I was just looking at the, the land that was, you know, still there around the building, and just wondering if-
I will also say, I'm, I'm not a guru on it, and, and Frank Turner, uh, who is here this evening with me, uh, and I apologize if I forgot to introduce him, but he is here with me from Blast Off, uh, could probably speak better to it, but there are state requirements with respect to the parking, parking, uh, the playground areas, and I, I know, for example, they have to be grassed, I don't know what the requirements are with respect to trees, so he would have to meet those requirements.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
I believe you have another question?
While you're still there, I'd love to ask a question.
Certainly.
Glad to see you here. Um, the obvious, uh, answer I'm sure is, uh, available to everybody just by seeing it, but there's a need, since we have more and more growing families moving to Smyrna, there's a great need for daycare, does, uh, does your, uh, owner have statistics that bear out what seems obvious?
That's a good question, whether he has statistics that he's willing to share or not, um, but I will say, at the Planning and Zoning Board, there were actually two or three, uh, folks that stood and said, "Bring it, we need more daycare," um, which is sort of rare for a zoning attorney to have anybody in support of an application that you didn't know was coming, um, but I don't know off the top of my head the statistics.
Well, just as an observation, you know, s- the city of Smyrna's age has been declining because we are enticing more and more young families, and they are reproducing and bringing more Smyrnans, and I would be remiss if I didn't invite those neighbors along Glen Ivy, Ivy Glen, uh, to, to join the city, many of them are, uh, have elected not to, uh, approach the city to be included in the city, and we'd love to invite them to do so, I think the benefits of being in the city and being a part of our conversation on a regular basis and meeting these needs on a regular basis, and our number-one line item in the budget is public safety, so rest assured that is very important to all of us, and if there are ways we can continue to help to do that, we want to do it.
Thank you.
Are there any future plans to purchase the dentist office?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, um, and then also in terms of, you know, that, you make a right turn into Ivy Glen, is there any plans or any way that we can talk about some kind of protective barrier, because right now we have people coming straight through that area, and that has caused accidents in our neighborhood, and so we're concerned about having that same thing occur with children and with the daycare, um, is that something that can be discussed, or is that, is there any room for discussion?
I'm not, I'm not the city DOT, so-
No, I know, but just, as a community member-
Just on that issue, that's going to be a discussion with state DOT.
Okay.
At the end of the day, that is their right-of-way, that is their decisions to make, that's a good question, I'm not saying you're concerned, but unfortunately, we don't have any say-so on that.
This is something we should reach out to G-
I would suggest you reach out to GDOT on it, it is their right-of-way, so they make those determinations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we've got some other folks that were sworn in that need to come forward and make your comments.
Okay, we- And then also, in terms of, you know that you make a right turn into Ivy Glen, is there any plans or any way that we can talk about some kind of protective barrier? Because right now, we have people coming straight through that area, and that has caused accidents in our neighborhood, and so we're concerned about having that same thing occur with children and with the daycare. Is that something that can be discussed, or is that, is there any room for discussion?
I'm not, I'm not the City DOT, so...
No, I know, but just, as a community member...
Just on that issue, that's gonna be a discussion with State DOT. At the end of the day, that is their right of way, that is their decisions to make. That's a good question, I'm not saying you're concerned, but unfortunately, we don't have any say-so on that.
This is something we should reach out to G.
I would suggest you reach out to GDOT on it. It is their right of way, so they make those determinations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we've got some other folks that were sworn in that need to come forward and make your comments.
Okay, we, does someone else wanna?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we just want, yeah.
Hi, this is really embarrassing. I'm Lee Hodges, I live at 4378 Ivy Glen Way. I wanna thank everyone that's gotten all our calls, because I know several people have dealt with our neighborhood and our concerns, especially Councilman Stoner, Mr. Stoner. Thank you. We actually have signatures here from the neighbors that couldn't make it, because they wanna make sure that their concerns are noted, that it's not just those of us that showed up. We get growth, we understand growth, we just wanna be heard, we wanna make sure the kids are safe, we wanna make sure we're safe, we wanna make sure our property value doesn't go down. Yes, we're not in Smyrna, we're in Cobb. We appreciate the offer, you know, but, but, you know, we, if our property value goes down, it does, it affects everyone along Smyrna, and we don't, we don't want that. And we, we moved to that community for the peace, for the quiet, for the happiness, now we play a game of Frogger every time we leave. And we mentioned all the accidents, and it comes down to, literally, I did all the math, for a point four miles, it's twenty-three accidents a month in a point-four-mile radius, like a little stretch of road, it's twenty-three accidents a month. We have photos here that we'd like you to look at, of accidents that have occurred recently in the past two months, and one of them did involve a child, and the child is crying, and the father's holding him. We don't want that to happen, nobody wants that to happen. We also didn't know if it was possible, we know, we get the, you know, the Georgia Department of Transportation, I've spoken to them, poor guys. We just didn't know if it was possible for Blast Off or Legacy to help out. Like, I've seen different businesses actually address their traffic concern and maybe have a traffic patrolman to go out during the heightened period to try to make sure everyone's safe. I don't know if that's a possibility, I don't know how that would be addressed, but considering the frequency of accidents, twenty-three accidents a month, that teeny stretch of road, that that is a major concern, and we don't wanna play Frogger, especially with children. I mean, you know, parents have screaming kids in the car, they're not gonna be paying attention. I've had people say, "Well, you're just gonna have to drive more carefully." If anyone has kids, I don't, I have dogs, but if anyone has kids, I've seen the parents in the car, you know, about ready to pull their hair out, I've seen the parents with the screaming kids, I've seen the parents reach behind to give them food, to give them, you know, iPad, whatever it is, they're not paying attention. So it's everyone else's job to watch out for the ones not paying attention, and being that you're the government of Smyrna, to represent all the people in Smyrna and those of us that are not, as you said, yet, to make sure that those parents that are ready to scream, that need a drink, that just wanna go home safely, you guys are doing your job to keep them safe. So I don't know if you guys want to look at what we have written down, look at the photographs of the accidents here. They're in two different areas, not just one area, it's two different areas. One is right in front of our neighborhood, and actually look at the signatures of people that did not make it tonight here, not because they got in an accident. Do you want my given names, too?
Yeah, please do. I think everybody on council has kids, so we understand the, the need for being safe, appreciate that.
Yeah, and I definitely understand your concerns, and I appreciate you taking the time to come here tonight, because I know that it's not as easy as it, as it looks to people who sometimes think, "Oh, you can just go to a council meeting." But I do want, I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is, are the traffic concerns different for this use than they would be for any other use at this location?
It, well, I mean, it's been vacant for, I think it's been for sale for ten years, and what, vacant for thirty years? It's, we've enjoyed that.
Right, but...
Who wouldn't? And we get, we get growth, we understand growth. But it is, we are in a unique situation, that our neighborhood is surrounded by driveways and businesses. I mean, it is, so it does make it hard to go in and out. It's, it's scary to go in and out, it really is, because we know, everyone's on their phone, no one's paying attention. So we get, and we're glad that it's okay, at least some of the businesses on the property aren't gonna be open for the weekend, yay, that's a little safer for us on the weekend. But what about, I mean, I don't know if the Academy's gonna have graduations, if they're gonna have events. There's roughly around forty parking spots, hundred and sixty-nine kids, Rusty informed me, it's, it's nine kids, I guess, per parking spot. What about staff? What about retail? What about, you know, if there is a graduation, if there's two parents that come, how's that traffic gonna affect that small parking lot? Because again, there's concerns with the fire trucks going in and out. I mean, there's just a lot of concerns that we have and we get that's gonna be there, we just want everything covered, we want, you know, all the i's dotted, the t's crossed, you know, a bar set up so we can, you know, drink away our stress. But, you know, we just want things like that addressed. Is it gonna be kids dropped off, or people are gonna have to park to get their, you know, bring their children inside? I mean, it's just a lot of questions we have, and we just wanna make sure, set up, because we also don't want our streets lined with cars. We don't want people turning around in our neighborhood, which they already do, because we've almost been hit... I do talk a lot. Okay, we've almost been hit leaving our neighborhood when people do a U-turn, because they can't make a left out of wherever they're coming, whatever driveway, so they'll make a right, turn into our neighborhood, do a U-turn, and continue on the merry way. So we just wanna figure out how all those concerns are gonna be addressed.
And we're, you know, obviously, we're aware of those issues and concerns, you know, anyway, because under our ordinances and our codes and everything else, and the sense of the number of parking spaces, the ability for egress and ingress, and also the issues concerning the public safety, in the sense of our vehicles and access, obviously, we take those into consideration under ordinances. On the end of the day, in the sense of traffic, we can't say no to a zoning just because of traffic. There is a lot of different factors, but at the end of the day, that's, that issue alone is not an issue to say no. And the property has been zoned as long as it's been zoned, even though it's, you know, and it's always been a generally commercial office or industrial site. So, you know, hopefully, we can ameliorate as much in the sense to the neighborhood from our side, and I would see the privacy fence, the landscaping buffer that's been put in, that's been, you know, required to be put in. We'll try to ameliate some of those issues in the sense of your neighbor versus some other type of business. You know, at one point, there was talk about putting a oil change place there. Obviously, we're not, that's not happening now. So the point is, we hear you, but at the same time, we have limits on what we can say yes and no to. And also, we're dealing with a state highway. So as we discussed before and everything, but I appreciate you coming out tonight and letting us know and providing that information to the council members.
With the, with the traffic, like a traffic policeman, would that be whose responsibility if that is even something that could happen? Because people ride that suicide lane, it's called suicide lane for a reason, like it's a regular lane.
I doubt that would be, we could require, that would be something up to the property owner, and at that point, they would have to come to the city to have a discussion, and also, you've got the state, you know, it's a state highway again. So in the sense of us making that requirement, that's, that's not a possibility on our end.
I assure you, they wanna be safe, too. The last thing they need is a fatality involving children, so they're, I'm sure they're gonna be that way.
Yeah, I've seen cars flipped there, and nine years ago, there was a really bad accident that the person was drastically injured and had to have a talk with the Georgia Department of Transportation, because it was that bad of an accident. So it is a major concern for all of us. But I guess, I mean, those are all our concerns, you guys hear them, and we, again, we're not opposing it, we just want everything to find a solution that everyone's happy with. I guess they say if both sides, it's like they had a little bit of a loss, both sides are winning. Because I guess you're never gonna get both sides completely happy. So thank you guys for all listening.
Did I hear you say there will be a Acel Dcel lane into the center from South Cobb? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know yet that GDOT is reviewing the application.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Was there someone else, I think, someone else that wanted to be sworn in real quickly to make a comment? I know that some other folks are sworn in, if they wanna make their comments, too, but someone else? Go ahead, and I would say, before we get started, those who have not, who got sworn in, unless, I don't wanna say that you can't get up and speak, but if we've covered the same subject matters, yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure you feel you got your opportunity. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I raised my hand when Mr. Fennell spoke about parents, I am a parent.
Please identify yourself and where you live.
My name is Jessica Ludolph, I live on 3769 Wakefield Hall Square, right off of Atlanta Road in Smyrna, and I'm a parent. I have two daughters, four and one, and when I was pregnant with my four-year-old, I could not find a quality daycare in Smyrna. I was on five wait lists, and I did not get a spot until she was two years old. So I just wanted to speak quickly as the voice of a parent. It is a growing community, I have many neighbors and friends that have young children or are pregnant, and they cannot find a daycare, so I am excited and would welcome a new quality daycare that could relieve some of these lengthy lists, and I support this. Thank you.
At this time, are there any other additional comments that would like to be made?
Hello, my name is Ray Rocha, I reside at 4379 Ivy Glen Way, Smyrna. I just would like to voice my concern, it would be more of the same, because my neighbors, they have, you know, said, whatever they have said so far, they are my concerns. But the most important thing that I've noticed about this development would be the daycare. Because of the amount of accident that I, I am seeing every day, from Cooper Lake up to East West Connector, I do not see the daycare as a great idea and development in that neighborhood because of the safety for the children. That is my most, our most concern about this, this problem. Just don't wanna take your time more than this. I would be opposing to this development. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments? Mr. Stoner, may I have a motion?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion, but with that motion, I wanna make some changes to stipulation eleven, stipulation seventeen as part of my motion that we discussed, and I'll, I'll read those in as part of the motion very quickly. For D 2017, I wanna make a motion, excuse me, for 4D 2017 dash one three five, zoning request Z 17 dash zero zero four, rezoning from NS conditional to NS conditional for the development of a twelve thousand three hundred fifty square foot daycare facility and a four thousand square foot retail building and one point nine acres landlot six to one at forty-third, forty-three ninety South Cobb Drive, applicant being Blast Off Construction Incorporated. The changes I wanna make in the stipulations, the stipulation eleven to read, retail truck delivery shall comply with code section forty-six dash one, garbage service to the property shall occur only between seven AM and eight PM. And then stipulation seventeen, HVAC units serving the retail building shall be installed on the retail building rooftop, HVAC units serving the daycare facility building shall be installed behind brick enclosure screening, such units view from the public right-of-way and the adjoining residential properties.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero.
Just real quick, I do wanna thank you all for coming out, and our invitation still stands, we'd like for you to join the city and everything.
My, my neighborhood is off Cooper Lake Road, too, a little further to the west, and we joined the city as a group as the homes were being built. We now are nine hundred and fifty-five home community off Cooper Lake Road, and we're thrilled to be in the city, so we welcome you to join us.
Item five is privileged licenses, and there are none. For item six, item B is a public hearing and presentation of the proposed budget for the fiscal year of 2018. Ms. Sadler-Jones, will you please read the background?
Yes, prior to the adoption of the fiscal year 2018 annual budget, we have scheduled public hearings. This is the first public hearing. Kristin Robinson, our finance director, and Jarrett Sigman, our budget officer, will be giving tonight's presentation. Our next public hearing is going to be on Wednesday, May the seventeenth, at twelve noon, in this exact room, the council chambers, and so I'm going to pass it over to Kristin and Jarrett for tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler-Jones. The 2018 fiscal year will start July first of 2017, and it will go through June thirtieth of 2018. The total proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year is ninety-two million, three hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. We started back in November with our capital budgeting process, and since then, the departments have submitted their operating budget requests. We've had a series of budget meetings and negotiations with finance and administration, ultimately cutting about four point eight million dollars from the original requests. Just to give you a little bit of context for the budget number for FY18, we've thrown it up here in this table compared to the FY17 revised budget numbers, and you can see the general fund, for instance, is proposed to be up five point one percent from the prior year. Special revenue funds are up ten point nine percent. Capital project funds are down quite a bit, thirty-one percent, that is almost entirely due just to the timing of different SPOST projects. The internal service fund is up thirty-five point nine percent, that is our vehicle replacement fund, and enterprise funds are down sixteen point seven percent. So the FY17 revised budget was a hundred and one million dollars, and that's compared to ninety-two million dollars for the upcoming year. We also wanted to compare the revenues and expenditures for FY18, and you can see those here. For the general fund, it has to balance, and the revenues and expenditures are balanced at forty-seven point three million dollars. And in the other groups of funds that you see there, you can see they are all transferring to cash reserves, so that is good news for FY18. General fund revenues, again, are at forty-seven point three million dollars with the, over half, you can see in that chart there, made up by property taxes, that's actually about fifty-six percent. And then the other sources of revenues that you see in the general fund are charges for services, other taxes, licenses and permits, and various miscellaneous sources of revenue. In terms of budgeting for these, we looked at historical actuals, we looked at year-to-date collections, and then we sought the input of our department heads for any other factors that may indicate an increase or decrease in the revenues. I indicated our property tax revenues are making up about fifty percent, fifty-six percent of our general fund revenues, and you kinda see in this slide, the net property tax digest, that is the total value of all real and personal property in the city, less any exemptions. So this is the value that is multiplied by the forty percent of the fair market value, and then it's multiplied by the millage rate of eight point nine nine mils. We have been able to balance our budget using the same low millage rate of eight point nine nine mils for the last several years, since 2007, in fact. We are basing this on information from the...
Cobb County Tax Assessor.
Cobb County Tax Assessor, and... A little nervous, I'm sorry. You know, that comes later.
Last time we get that.
The Cobb Assessor has done a commercial revaluation of all commercial properties across the city, that's for every commercial property. We have also seen a revaluation of some residential properties in the city, and as a result of that, based on the assessor's recommendation, we are recommending an eight percent increase in our tax digest. And you can see sort of the trend of the tax digest over the last several years. You see the decrease there with it really bottoming out in 2013, and then increasing since then. Tax year 2017, fiscal year FY18, will be our largest tax digest to date. General fund expenditures do balance at forty-seven point three million dollars. As was indicated earlier, public safety does make up about thirty percent of our general fund expenditures, it's the largest portion. And then in roughly equal amounts, you've got general government services, public works, and then health insurance and other benefits also contributing to that. Debt and capital projects are in here as well, and we will touch on those later in this presentation. The E911 fund is one of our special revenue funds. It is proposed at one point six nine million dollars this year, and it's a bright spot for us. Since it was established a number of years ago, this fund has historically required a subsidy from the general fund in order to meet its expenditure obligations. Our police department has been very diligent in coming up with ways to make that self-sufficient, and they have been working with the City of Powder Springs on a new business agreement with them that would provide 911 services to that city. So that's not quite finalized yet, but if that agreement goes through, we will need to hire four new communications officers in our E911 center, so those will be some additional expenditures, but the new revenues from that agreement are exp... additional expenditures, but the new revenues from that agreement are expected to fully make up that difference, and in fact, balance this fund for the first time since its history. Another bright spot in our budget is the hotel motel fund, and it's been a bright spot. Tourism is the number one industry in Cobb County, and that was before the Braves came to town. So we do expect this to increase. The largest revenue stream for this fund is a tax on room nights occupied in Smyrna hotels. So we're not anticipating a big spike in this number because we would need additional hotel rooms to really see that increase. We are expecting some increase, however, and this fund is doing just fine. It's expected to transfer over a half million dollars to the general fund, in addition to transferring $30,000 to cash reserves. Moving on to the water sewer fund, we are looking at revenues of $19.3 million. That includes $18.5 million for water and sewer usage. Those are the collections we receive from our customers. We also receive some revenues as a result of development impact fees throughout the city. And then on the expenses side, you can kind of see the different breakdowns of expenses there. I would say the biggest increase on the expense side is probably wholesale water, going from about $10.4 million in FY17 revised to about $10.7 million in FY18. We've also got almost $3.5 million of expenses planned for the water sewer capital project fund. And then debt obligations make up a small percent as well. Really, the story here is that this fund is expected to contribute $600,000 to cash reserves, and that's coming on the heels of our using about $4.8 million from reserves in FY17. So just one year later, we are already expecting to begin restoring those funds that we had to take from reserves in the current fiscal year. Moving on to the general fund capital improvement plan, or CIP, we do schedule this over five years. You can see, we actually only budget the upcoming fiscal year, and that's just over $1 million for FY18. And then looking at kind of what's coming down the pipeline, you can see that we've got a couple of pretty big years coming up. I will say at this point, we are optimistic that we will see a pretty good surplus for the current fiscal year, and we are hopeful that we'll be able to commit some of those funds to future capital projects. The next three slides sort of list all the general fund capital projects that we are proposing for funding in fiscal year 18. I'm not going to read through all of these, but I will point out a couple. You see $85,000 there for self-check kiosks and RFID conversion. That's at the library. If you have been there lately, you may have noticed the kiosks are actually already there. That was funded as part of the current fiscal year. So you can take advantage of those self-check stations right now. The RFID component will be added in FY18, and so that will speed up the process for patrons looking to check out their books, and it will also help with staff as they manage their inventory. I'll also point out on this side, on this slide, $50,000 for sports field renovations. That is specifically for field improvements at Brinkley Park and Tollison Park. On the next slide, I'll mention the police storage facility for $50,000. We were initially thinking we have to construct a brand-new building behind the police station, but it turns out we were able to come up with a plan to retrofit the front office space in the city record building that is on Atlanta Road, sort of between the community center and the police station. So we'll be able to take advantage of that, and as a result, it's a less expensive project. The other benefit there is that we can stop spending money for the offside storage as we are currently doing. And in this last slide, I'll mention the roof repairs and replacements for $150,000. That is for the community center and for the police station roofs. Those will ultimately have to be replaced, and when they do here in four or five years, those are big-ticket items. So we're pushing those off for a few years, and we are optimistic that these roof repairs that we make in FY18 will get us a few more years down the road and allow us to sort of build up our reserves in anticipation of those big expenditures. Altogether, it's 20 new projects in the general fund CIP totaling a little over $1 million. We also have capital projects in our enterprise funds. You can see the schedule here. We always have infrastructure and drainage projects in our water sewer CIP. This year, we are also adding the first of a four-year project to replace our water meters and dials. You see, that's $880,000 per year for the next four years. That is an expensive project. That equipment has a lifespan of about 15 years, and the equipment we've got right now is due for replacement. The good news is, we don't have to take on new debt to do that. We are expecting to be able to pay for that expense with cash from our utility operations. So the water sewer CIP is at $3.5 million. We also budget money every year for capital projects to maintain our stormwater infrastructure. Vehicle replacements and additions are kind of another form of capital projects, and we've got several that are proposed for FY18. We are adding a second heavy rescue truck to our inventory of fleet. Fire administration is going to be getting that heavy rescue truck in Fire Station 4. And along with that truck, we're also going to be recommending six new firefighters to help staff it. So that will sort of mirror the service that we already have in service at Fire Station Number One. So between the heavy rescue at One and Station 4, those two rescue trucks will handle all of our medical calls throughout the city. That is the only vehicle addition. The rest of these are replacements of existing vehicles. As you go down the list there, the big number that jumps out at you is $820,500 for six vehicles and water distribution. I'll just note that most of that, about $675,000, is for two sewer vacuum trucks. So that's taken up the bulk of that expense. Altogether, it's 16 vehicles at almost $1.3 million. That is an increase over the $949,000 that we budgeted in the current fiscal year. And with that increase, we are planning to use about $180,000 from funds previously committed to help cover that expense. I wanted to touch on debt obligations. We've got about $66 million worth of total outstanding bond debt. Those issuances go back to 1997, I believe, and they've allowed us to do a number of different things, like invest in our downtown and develop new parks and redevelop lighted property. Of that $66 million, we expect to pay down about $4.5 million in the upcoming fiscal year, most of that from the general fund, and then about $250,000 from previously committed funds. I'll also note, a different kind of debt is capital leases, and FY18 is the last year we'll have to pay a payment on our Johnson Controls meter reading equipment from 2004. We have a number of proposed fee changes. I'm not going to go through most of these. They're in our budget book. There are a lot of them. I will point out that the water sewer division will be updating its fee schedule to reflect the fees that went into effect in March of this year. That's a pass-through from advanced disposal. Excuse me, that's the sanitation fee that went into effect in March. The fee schedule that we're updating for water sewer went into effect in January of this year, and that's a 3% pass-through from the Cobb Marietta Water Authority. We're also proposing a 50 cent increase for the stormwater fee. It's a monthly fee of $2.45. We'll be increasing that to $2.90 in an effort to cover our capital obligations that are coming in future years. The department submitted 26 new personnel requests in our budget process, and this budget includes 20 of those positions. And I will go through them on this slide. We are proposing four communications officers in our E 911 fund. I mentioned those earlier. That's in association with the new business that we expect to be doing with Powder Springs. Fire prevention is requesting an additional inspector slash investigator to help with annual inspections. Fire response is adding six new fire trainees. Again, those go along with that heavy rescue truck that we mentioned earlier. Human Resources has asked for a risk coordinator to help manage some safety programs and reduce our workers' compensation claims and property and liability claims. Parks Department will be getting a new maintenance technician. This is because not just rentals that have increased, but also we are adding the Reed House, which is the historic property on Atlanta Road that the city purchased and is renovating for use as a special events facility that will be operational in FY18 and will require additional staff support. And then you see between recycling and sanitation, five new crew workers and a truck driver. Those are necessary due to growth in the city. The good news is, the new customers will be enough to pay for those new positions. And then traffic engineering has asked for a new crew worker to help with maintaining traffic signals and especially street signs in the city. So altogether, we're looking at 20 positions to save some money in the next year's budget. We are budgeting these at either one-half or three-quarters of a fiscal year with the total budget impact being $737,000. There are a number of other personnel requests that are recommended in this budget as well, including 18 position reclassifications that come with a $71,000 budget impact, as well as a paramedic supplemental pay increase. That will be 2.5% pay increase for all existing paramedics, and then a 5% increase for new paramedics. The goal here is to make us more competitive with our peers in the marketplace, as well as reward and really incentivize our staff to take on what is a very rigorous training program to get that paramedic certification. That comes with a budget impact of about $89,000. We are also proposing a class and compensation study at about $15,000 to be performed in July, with possible implementation of new salary tables in January. We have budgeted $613,000 in general fund contingency. That does include an estimated $50,000 to bring affected staff up to the minimums of those new salary ranges that might go into effect as a result of that class and compensation study, as well as $280,000 for merit creases, merit raises in January should council choose to adopt those as they have in previous years. I also wanted to mention health insurance. That's a big item in our budget at $4.9 million. It is an $820,000 increase over the prior year. That's 20% over FY17 revised budget. I will note that of that $820,000, about 180 of it is due to new personnel requests. Now, we want to strike a balance here, right? We want to provide a good benefit to our employees, but we also want to manage these costs. So we've been attempting to do that. Over the past few years, we've been gradually reducing the employer contribution to premiums, as well as doing things like raising deductibles, raising co-pays, and taking other measures to reduce our costs. Couple of other highlights I want to finish with. One is a $100,000 transit feasibility study. Our council has already been collaborating with federal, state, and regional partners, and they are fully supportive of it. That's the good news. The better news is that this is a matching grant. So for our $100,000 contribution, we will leverage an additional $400,000 of federal funding to help accomplish this. Another source of federal funding is the Community Development Block Grant, and we expect to have about $325,000 at our disposal this year. That money will be used for improvements at Johnquill Park, Ward Park, and Chuck Camp Park. And a portion of those funds are also used to fund the salary of our Ward 5 Code Enforcement Marshal. You can find a copy of the budget book on our website. We've got a link to it on the homepage. You can see it there, a circle that says FY 2018 Proposed Budget. I will also point out on this page at the top right, you can see a link to financial/budget. If you click that, you can see not just the proposed budget book, but copies of previously adopted budget books. You can also find our contact information for reaching out to us. If you have any questions or comments about this budget book, please feel free to do so. I'll end with this slide, which Ms. Sadler-Jones already mentioned. Today is the formal budget presentation and public hearing. We do plan to have a second public hearing in these council chambers on Wednesday at noon this week for anyone who might have been unable to attend this presentation. And then three weeks from now, we expect to be back here for the formal adoption of the FY18 proposed budget. We're available to answer any questions tonight if you or any citizens have them for us.
You survived.
I made it.
You made it. Good job. I want to commend both of you and the department heads for the work, and Ms. Jones, for the team, putting together such a detailed and rigorous document. I know this is the one vote per year that we have to do, just like in the general sum, you have one thing you have to do. That's to pass a budget and properly be custodians of the taxpayers' dollars. So thank you for the work you put in to date, and we're still accepting now public input.
Do we have any questions?
Are there members of the council who'd like to address a question to the staff before we actually hear from the public? This is a public hearing, so if anyone has a comment that they would like to offer, please come forward at this time and offer your comments. You have another opportunity on Wednesday, as they pointed out at noon, or you can do so electronically through email to communicate with any member of council, the mayor, or the staff, asking questions or offering comments. This is your first public hearing opportunity, if anyone has any input. Mr. Mayor, I see no comment at this time, but we continue to welcome online comment, in-person comment Wednesday, and up to June 5th, when we will actually consider it at this panel for formal adoption.
All right. Mr. Fennel, would you, oh, may I please have a motion? Oh, no motion. Jokes. Okay.
We get to that June 5th under motion. But thank you. This hereby concludes the public hearing, number one.
Item C is authorization to purchase playground equipment with CDBG funds for Chuck Camp Park from Compan via the U.S. Community State Contract at a total cost of around $150,000. Ms. Sadler-Jones, will you please read the background?
Yes, thank you, Honorary Mayor. This is a request to purchase playground equipment with CDBG funds for Chuck Camp Park from Compan via the U.S. Community State Grant at a total cost of $149,999.43. Compan offers a variety of playground pieces, and Chuck Camp Park will be the first park in the city to have this style playground equipment that has been selected by our public, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation Director, Richard Garland. Delivery and installation is anticipated in June of 2016. The existing playground, I'm sorry, yeah, 17, wrong year, 2017, pardon me. The existing playground equipment was installed in 2003, and it is 14 years old. And most of our playground manufacturers are unable to supply replacement parts for playground equipment that is up to 15 years old. So this is a request to purchase playground equipment for Chuck Camp Park with CDBG funds.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you. I guess Richard is not here, is he?
No.
Anyway, I think, one thing, I don't know if it's possible to put up the rendering of the SpaceNet so the public can see, because it's kind of really neat, but is that possible, Terry?
Yeah.
The rendering?
Yeah, we don't have it on the thumb drive, but we can
Oh, okay.
add it to our website if you
Sure, I think that would be great.
Yeah, we'll add it to the website tomorrow.
If you're familiar with the, my kids call it the spider web playground at Cobb Park, and it's like that times 10. It's pretty cool.
Right. So anyway, I think it'll be really a nice asset to that area. And I also think, understand that some of the playground equipment will stay there for a little while.
It's my understanding the toddler portion of the playground will stay. It's in good condition to remain.
Okay. Well, at this time, I will make a move to approve item 6C 2017-144, the authorization to purchase playground equipment with CDGB funds for Chuck Camp Park from Compan via the U.S. Community State Contract at a total cost of $149,999.43.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to note quickly that I am, I am very excited about this project. It's, CDBG funds are, that money comes from our federal tax dollars, and it is always very nice to see that money come back to Smyrna so we can use it in a way that improves the entire community. I'm happy to support this.
All in favor, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. The next item on our list is number seven, commercial building permits, and there are none. And then the next item is the consent agenda. Ms. Sadler Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, the consent agenda is as follows. Item A, approval of mayor and council meeting minutes for May first, 2017. Item B, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes for April twenty-seventh, 2017. Item C, award RFQ seventeen dash zero-two-seven Smyrna Resurfacing Project to the lowest bidder, Bartow Paving Company, for eight hundred thousand, eight hundred forty-six thousand one hundred nine dollars and eighty-five cents, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Most of the resurfacing will be funded by SPOST, except for the repaving of the parking lots at Tolleson and City Hall. They are going to be funded by CIP. And item D, approval of transition of flexible spending account administration from Guardian to Wage Works.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Do I hear a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. Item nine is committee reports. I would like to ask Mr. Derek Norton to start.
Thank you, Mr. Honorary Mayor. I don't have a committee report, but I want to thank you for being here with us tonight and did a great job. You picked a long one, but best of luck to you in the future.
Thank you.
I want to say a thank you to Krista and Jared for all their work on the budget. Great presentation, and I thank you all. And to Tammy, glad, glad we moved you up in the agenda, because your son wouldn't have made it, I'm pretty sure. But I think the citizens of Smyrna are going to be well-served, and congratulations for that, for you in that position. That's all. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, are you planning on a career in politics? I think you'd do well.
I haven't, like, thought about it. I was thinking about going into law now, but I'm not sure. Possibly? I don't know.
Give it, give it some thought. You've got a few years in college to, you know, you might be good. Anyway, I don't have an official committee report tonight, so I do pass.
Ms. Terry Anilowicz?
Thank you, and thank you again for presiding over our meeting tonight. I wish you all the best when you matriculate to Brown University next year.
Thank you.
It's very exciting. The, I did want to make one quick note in that, for the Vision Committee, that is that Kelsey Scott, who has been the community liaison, she is actually transitioning out of that role, and we're sad to see her go, but also completely understand. But she is leaving us with lots of information and lots of notes for all of the work that the committees have been doing, so we are looking forward to keeping the vision going. And you will still be receiving the Vision Newsletter and things like that. I also wanted to congratulate Tammy Sadler Jones as well. I'm very delighted and thrilled that she is our city administrator. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, sir. I want to thank you for coming out this evening as well. You did a fantastic job. The only thing I want to add to that is to welcome Ms. Sadler Jones and wish her nothing but the best. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson?
I wanted to thank you as well. You've done a great job, and we've enjoyed having you here tonight. And also, congratulations to Tammy. I'm excited for your new role. All right, thank you.
Mr. Doug Stoner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you for presiding tonight. You did a very good job, considering this was not an easy, long night. And I really would hope you would at least consider a career in public service. Don't, don't say no just yet, and everything. But again, I also want to thank Tammy to continue on. You know, you worked with us for many years as our assistant city administrator, and glad to have you on board as our full-time city administrator, and very, very, very happy to see you in that position. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just note, with all the work we've had done by our team on the budget, I wanted to acknowledge, I think I did earlier, a month or so ago, but we received a packet from the, about our comprehensive annual financial reporting that we do, and there was an acknowledgement through a certificate of achievement that we received from the, the folks who do this for a living. And I just wanted to acknowledge again how important it is for us to be recognized as a team for the ongoing excellence in taking care of our taxpayers' money. And I noticed that Cobb County last week received a similar acknowledgement of distinction. And I don't know how many people really realize, but the city of Smyrna, Cobb County, and the state of Georgia, all three enjoy a triple-A bond rating. That is the highest achievement possible for municipal, county, and state governments. And I'm proud of the fact that there are very few places in the whole country that have that distinction of the trifecta. And so that gives us the triple-A, triple-A, and I'm thrilled to have that. And thank you for the team, for all that you've done. I just remind everyone that schools will be letting out over the next couple of weeks, your summer season, and the outflow of kids into the streets will be starting. So I join with our public safety officials, who do a great job in helping to keep an eye out, make sure that we keep our families and our children safe during this time, and celebrate. It'll be summer soon. With that, I yield.
Mr. Cochran, do you have anything to add this evening?
Yeah, just real quick, I'll say the same thing the other guys have said. Mr. Acting Mayor, as is the case every year, the IB students from Campbell come in here and bring up the average IQ in the room dramatically. So I think, thanks for that. Tammy, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you. Worked together for a while, and I'm looking forward to this next chapter. And Jared, I don't know how you do it, that, that present, how you keep it all handy, that, I mean, all at the, at the, at your fingertips. That is so much information to be able to articulate, impressed. And Mr. Acting Mayor, also, you mentioned you may want to be a lawyer, and you would be an asset to the legal community if you choose to stay around here, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Stay out of the Northeast. They don't need more lawyers up there.
Ms. Graham, anything to add this evening?
Yes, I would. I'd like to, I'd also like to say to Harold, what a great job you did. I was really proud of everything that you, how you worked through the, the meeting, and I wish you well in your, in your going to Brown and all your future endeavors. And also, I'd like to say that I'm looking forward to work, continuing to work with Tammy as well. I think it'll be a great future. But, and with that, thank you.
Item ten is show cause hearings. There are none. Item eleven is citizen input, and at this time, I would like to call Alex Bakie, I believe it is. Bakery, I'm sorry.
That, there we go. That no action has been taken on the city, so I'd like to bring up the subject again, and that's the improper removal of the no parking signs in my subdivision. Now, the city has, did not take the proper vote in the first place based on the charter. Now, they did put up computer information signs. To me, these are a smokescreen for what the real issue is. Those computers show if you need a bump, speed bumps, if there's violations, running stop signs, what have you. Those are all moving. The real issue is the stationary violations, which is no parking. So it's important that you don't, you separate the two. Again, this is not the information that we need to have a vote from this council on a yes or no to put the signs back up or not. We did have a meeting, and we're supposedly supposed to have a second meeting, and that's never happened. Another example of ineptness in communications by certain people on the council. There are people on this council that should take a course in proper communications, because none of the residents were ever asked their input, or the people that use the street. And that's what really bothers a lot of people. It's the communications of the people that pay your salaries. And again, this was very sneaky in doing this in the first place. And all I'm asking is, if you have a charter, you follow the charter, why have a charter if you're not going to properly pursue the procedures on it? And all I'm asking, and other people asked me, for you to have a vote at the next council meeting, just two-minute vote, so we have proper closure, because this entire situation has been handled backwards. And it's just mind-boggling to me how this has all been miscommunicated and done wrongly. And again, I would like to see, we could have an improper, impromptu vote here tonight. All I want is closure on how you all look, whether you should have the signs taken down or not at the next meeting. Takes two minutes, and we'll have final closure, so we know where the city stands on this issue. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to call up Johnny Hacks. Okay, he's already left. Okay.
I'll try to make this short, because it is, what, nine forty-four? Quarter ten? No, just a couple of ques, just a minor question, just a response. I'm going to make a comment, and you guys can respond afterwards. I'll walk away and sit down. That is, I guess it was two meetings ago, I brought up a subject of, like, there were some rumors going around at an excessive amount of owed per household in taxes. And one of the questions, just when I started talking to two or three of the people here tonight, was that Hickory Lakes, let's, let's use Hickory Lakes as an example, was there profitable situation? And after reviewing it, using the numbers that were brought out at the last mayoral campaign, of that will cost the city around twenty-five million dollars versus the revenue that we'll be bringing in, how do we justify twenty-five million dollars bringing in on the, what is it, a hundred and ninety-four homes there? I think it was, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, of an annual revenue of about nineteen thousand two hundred dollars a year? And I would just like to hear a response of what justifies paying, spending twenty-five million versus the nineteen million in revenue we'll bring? Or if you want to take it to a thirty-year plan, taking the thirty million dollars and investing in a, in a CD, I'm just using that example, would bring us about a hundred and seventy-two million dollars in thirty years versus the five hundred and twenty thousand that revenue from taxes we'll bring in on that? I would just like a response. Whoever wants to respond?
Oh, okay. At this time, I would like to call up Lee Hodges, if you're still here. No? Okay. Thomas Starr?
He's on.
Okay, well, all right. If there's no other business to be brought before this body, I call this meeting to be adjourned at nine forty-six.
Good job.
Thank you.
You did good.
Thank you. Thank you. I was very frazzled.
You did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
When is graduation?
It's next Friday.
Okay.
Oh, yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Congratulations. Well done.
Yeah, thank you. I come around there, you want to?
Come here. I wasn't going to, I'll try to answer that. Yeah.
It's, it's, I see that, and then, and I, I